Here.
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 I'm here also. Now we'll have the invocation offered by Reverend Don Anderson.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come to you today. We are so thankful for a beautiful day that you bestowed upon our community and all the many blessings that you've given to us. And Father, tonight as we come here together as our leaders have been assigned the task of taking care of the duties that our city needs taken care of, Lord, all of the business, all of the things that are needed tonight, I pray that you give them wisdom, that you'd give them courage and strength and discernment to make the decisions that would be best interest of the community. And Father, I also ask that you be with those who serve our community to protect the police, fire, EMS, Lord, just protect and serve them tonight and this week we pray. Father, we thank you for those who serve us, thank you for our mayor and our leaders and our council, and pray your gracious blessings upon them tonight. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we come to public comments, and I'll start on the right front. Is there anybody on the right side that would like to address council? Please, if you would introduce yourself, please, and see that that microphone is on.
Hello.
Is that a short joke? Thanks. My name is Deborah Sharp, and I do live out in the county, but I am here to complain about Main Street. I moved to Lebanon in 1988, and in 1988, Main Street was absolutely terrible in 88. Over the years, it has progressively gotten worse. The destruction of this street is mostly attributed to the Lebanon city dump trucks speeding up and down the road. Yes, these trucks are definitely breaking the speed limit. If they pass you and you cannot read this sign on the side of their truck, which they're supposed to be going 25 mile an hour, they're speeding. I cannot give you an estimate of how many times these cities' trucks have ran the stop sign at Ginger and Peach. I can tell you that on several occasions, I have felt in danger of an accident because of these extreme driving habits. Sad that the city has no concern for that, I guess it will take fatality before the city of Lebanon wakes up. Main Street connects the outer Route 66 into Lebanon proper. This road has potholes that can swallow a small car, ripples that can jar your teeth. Some potholes are severe enough that when hit, can bend the rim on your car. I know that for a fact because it happened to me. At the time that this happened, I was traveling at about 15 miles per hour, and because the vehicle was coming towards me wanting to avoid potholes and patches was coming down the middle of the road. A few years ago, the city of Lebanon put in some kind of drainage piping from the sewer plant into Main Street. Whoever came up with this bright idea was a moron. Please excuse me for such strong language, but you really do need to see the flooding that happens every time it rains. It literally becomes impassable for a car. The higher-built trucks can drive through it, but not a passenger car. Just a couple of weeks ago, I helped someone because their car stalled in the flooded area. Don't think that that person was stupid by any means. They had just moved to Lebanon about a month ago, and that was the only route they knew to get to town. Severe rains hit Lebanon the last week of May. The day before the rain started, the city was patching Main Street. As usual, there was flooding there by the sewer plant. I was impressed to see a couple pieces of asphalt floating in the floodwaters in a field adjacent to Main. On June 3, I drove Main into town because this is the most gasoline-efficient way for me to go. I unpleasantly discovered a deep truck tire rut in one of the new patches. I say it is a truck tire rut because the rut is curved with tracks leading to a field across Main, and there was a big truck in that field. I don't believe in coincidence, but the rut is severe enough, it does jerk the wheel in your hands. The city of Lebanon should really cut its losses from patching Main to repaving Main. As many times that patches over patches over patches have been done to the road could have been repaved. The patches that get replaced only last a few months. During the hot summer months, the asphalt becomes very soft, they start wearing away, and we are back to the same situation, a road with teeth-jarring ripples and wheel-bending potholes and torn-up cars. The city of Lebanon only seems to care about the city, about the appearance of the city. Jefferson Street, Elm Street, Commercial, all very well-kept. The city has the money to maintain the main roads in and out of town, such as where the tourists travel, but no money for residential streets. It's residents that provide the money of the beautification, but receive no benefit of road maintenance. There is no concern for the person that has to replace their torn-up tires for poor roads, but I'm quite sure that person is very happy to have antique-looking streetlights on Mill Creek. I had to pay $300, $300 to replace the bent rim on my car, the one from the pothole, $300. But having those trees on Commercial really gave me a lot of comfort. City of Lebanon wants to grow. They want more people to move into the area. How is that to happen if so many of our roads are in such deplorable condition? Most of the people that moved to this area want to live out in the country, yet their cars are going to be torn to shreds because of the roads, not the county roads, the city roads. Maybe the real estate agents should tell these newcomers, "Well, your house payment is going to be this amount of dollars, and your vehicle repair account is going to be this amount of dollars." Yes, that will surely encourage growth of our fair city. When industries come to Lebanon for possible manufacturing sites, they consider much more than just a piece of land. They look at church affiliations, shopping, utilities for the employees, and living areas. They consider the areas that their trucks will need to travel. They don't want to be pouring their profits into vehicle repairs. They also don't want to be getting calls from employees because their cars are broke down or their tires are flat. I thank you for your time, and I pray that my complaint has not fallen on deaf ears.
Anybody else on the right have something they'd like to say to council? Moving to the left. Anybody on the left side? Howard.
Howard Fuller, and I've got some good stuff and not-so-good stuff. First of all, State of Missouri has put on a nice ad helping Lebanon. They feature, by the way, Route 66 and Mungar Moss, got a great deal on the museum and everything like this. That's put out and paid for by the State of Missouri Tourism. So I hope if you haven't seen it, that's a good thing, okay? Now, we're going to go through it just a little bit because I'm kind of disturbed at some of the directions that we are going, and I don't know if it's such a good direction. So I'll just go through it a little bit. On the 13th day of December 1999, a law was recognized, and the mayor and the council passed the ordinance 3978, recognizing state law HB 948 as a state law meant for them. We worked together, and any problems that would arise, we just sat down and we worked together. Richard Shockley did a great job on Seminole for the new numbers that they had just received. He just took that out, and we changed it over to Route 66. They got some new numbers, everybody happy, and we all went down the road. Mayor Bud Allen asked us to give him a little time to make the rest of Elm Street to Route 66 only, so we waited. New mayors, new councils. 16 years later, we asked for the job to be completed, and the mayor and the council looked like they were happy about it in February about the change. Then comes Chris Hurd. He don't like it. He doesn't think his law is for him. All of a sudden, you would think that we were asked to burn little children on the street, you know, it's ridiculous. We are now into playing games, and with polls and surveys. I've noticed that we've had a lot of polls and surveys. We've had them about dogs. We've had them about whether you want your address changed. I'll just read the survey that the city of Lebanon passed out. "City of Lebanon is conducting a survey with the property owners and tenants along Elm Street and Mill Creek. We would like to know your opinion concerning changes to Elm Street, I mean to the street name, from Elm Street to Route 66. Are you in favor of the street name change from Elm Street to Route 66, yes or no? Will the street name change cause a financial burden to you or your business, yes or no? Do you understand if the street name change is approved, your street mailing address will change?" Well, number one, the city of Lebanon does not have the power or the right to change anybody's address. That's not your position. That's the postal service. And so, but since we're doing all these surveys and we want to find out what the public's opinion is, I thought, well, I'd just go ahead and write you a new one, and I'll use your survey. The city of Lebanon is conducting a survey with property owners and tenants in Lebanon. "We would like your opinion concerning the changes of your electric rate. Are you in favor of your electric rate change, yes or no? Will this electric rate cause a financial burden to you or your business, yes or no? Do you understand that if this electric rate changes, we don't really care about your opinion?" No, I'm just making a point. I know that we have got to do electric rates. I'm not doing that. But leadership makes decisions and tries to do what's best for the people, and then you make a decision. You can't do it by poll, especially when it comes to a state law. That state law only asked the city of Lebanon to change the street name and the mailing address of the two properties that you have on that street. That's what designated, can't designate it any other direction. That's what it means. But we're waiting for a legal opinion on Thursday. I think Chris Allen's going to give us a legal opinion, so I'm not going to go any further into that. But I'll tell you what, I'll ask the mayor to do something, and if I was you, I would apologize to Beth Long. She worked three hard years on that law, and you have heard her.
Say that again, please.
I said, "I would apologize to Beth Long on that law that she passed. She worked on it three years, and you have hurt her." So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else on the left? We will move to discussions and presentations and start with the discussion from the park board relative to their budget.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, the council chair.
John, would you introduce Mr. Crawford?
Yes, I will. This is Park Board President James Crawford. His term is up this month. We will be searching for a new elected officer, so June will be his last month as president. We will have a new president for the following or upcoming year possibly, unless he intends to serve again. That decision will be made Wednesday. So going forward, our FY15 budget, as you can see, we had some park tax. We budgeted, and what we're projecting to actually have is about $20,000 over that. Our park activities, we did come in a little bit under. Part of that was Nelson rent was a little bit shy of what was budgeted for us, and also because of the revenue from the pool. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, park activities, wrong line. Park activities is down a little bit because of the number of softball teams. It keeps dwindling every year, and those numbers just continue to go down. We forecast down, but it just keeps falling down on us. Sorry about that. Building rental, that was the $24,000. It's down a little bit from what we were told Nelson would be, so I projected it 18. It may actually come back and catch that 24. I don't know. Concession rentals, again, number of softball teams and baseball teams are down throughout the town. That would account for that $800 shortfall there. And donations, that's always just a guess what we're going to get, and we actually came in a little bit above where we thought we would be. Next, please. Our operation expenses, as you can see, we've projected for operation portion of the budget, 437. We're projected to be about 416, so we're going to come in about $20,000 under our operating expenses, which I think is really good. Park capital was at 360. We're at 296. Some of that is carried over into the FY16 budget just because of final numbers and bills getting turned in and things like that, so it's going to kind of catch us right in the middle of the budget year. Boswell operations, we budgeted 87. We're at 57, so we actually did better than what we budgeted. On the pool budget, we budget for every day all summer long to be open and full staff and everything else, obviously, as the days, bad weather, rainy days and that stuff, we don't close, we don't open, so that's why our money is down there, our costs are down there. We are working on those numbers, trying to get it even better for this year, but that budget number, I'm still going to budget what the maximum dollar I could potentially spend. If we had a great summer, we were open every hour. We were going to be open with max guards. I feel that's the only way to do it right. BAC capital, we budgeted 22.5. We came up with some new ideas about how we were going to staff this year, and I wanted to get those staffing changes made and see how that was going to work before we added any new additions to the pool and new toys to make sure we could guard appropriately for these new items. So we'll probably buy those toward the end of the year, into the park pool season for next year. And park activities, again, we budgeted 26.5, and we spent 33. We did come up with some new events, and we've gotten more aggressive with advertising and shirts and some of those things, so the cost has gone up a little bit on that. We ended up with a really new event with the Hunger Games, and just add some additional costs there. The FY16 budget, we pretty much took last year's numbers. The building rent went away. Part of that was the Nelson. Now that building rent is strictly from shelters. Concession rent, rentals, you can see, we went down on that number. We did our $1,000 donation again. Park activities was from the pool and that stuff, pool, ball fields and things like that that were rentals. And as you can see with the note there, that the projected revenue is down for the Nelson building rental. The operational expenses kind of speak for themselves. There's 505,000 worth of budget operating expenses. That's a little bit right at our funding, or real close to what our funding for operations is, but part of that is a master plan that we may or may not decide to do, so that's one reason that operating expense is a little higher than it possibly could be. Park capital, again, those are some carryovers from this year that got rolled in where we save money, and some of it's new operations. That is our funds. BAC operations there, again, that's based on full guarding and everything else, full staff for the pool for the whole season. We got the capital in there to add some more toys, and we really need to do, and we went through this in the CIPs, we definitely have to put some caulking and paint and some things in there, so those numbers are all reflected in that number. And then park activities would be the last account. The 2014-15 projects that are funded by park project taxes. We built the new restroom at Ashley for $81,000. The new tennis court overlays, $38,000. If anybody's seen that, we've got one done. We still have one court to complete. They don't recommend that it gets wet for 24 hours, and if you've tried to paint outside the last couple of weeks, it has not gone well for us, or last month, it's not gone well on that. I sent Lee Anne some pictures of it when we first got some of it close, and how long ago was that? That's the more we've got done since then. So I apologize, but we're trying to do it the best we can. We put in new surfacing material at all the ball fields, and we continue to chase that operation. We've taken out our agri lime fields and went to red surface, infield conditioner surface mixed with the ag lime. It makes it more playable, a little softer, a little easier on the sliding, a little easier to see balls because it's the red color instead of the white. We've had really good reviews on it. Everybody really likes it. I think as we continue to mix this material and keep working in and working in over the next couple of years, our fields will be really outstanding on the infield portion of the ball fields. Climbing walls, we put one climbing wall in last year. We've added another section to it, very, very popular attraction. It replaces one of the diving boards or helps to replace one of the diving board activities, and it is a lot safer than a diving board from an insurance standpoint. It's, to my knowledge, from the company that builds those things, there has not been a significant injury from them as of yet. There's a gym for you. There's our playground out at Ashley, the new inclusive playground that's under construction. Again, with all the rain, it's just been impossible to pour concrete and do the things that we need to get done there. Hopefully, we'll get some nice weather over the next couple of weeks, and we can get in there and get that project finished. Renovations at the ball fields, again, trying to get the ball fields where we can attract teams to come from out of town. We've built new scorer stands, put a roof on it, redone bathrooms, helped the concession stand and brought it up to code and everything else for the health department, so we're making progress. Fund 22 projects through the help of the city council. In the Fund 22, we put in new filters at 61.5. Nelson Phase 1 is really coming along. Anybody that came out for Kids Fishing Day and seen what a great event that made it, I'm not sure we could have had Kids Fishing Day this year because of the rain and the mud and everything else, had it not been for the parking lot and the walking trail around, the new fishing access on the north side of the lake. One of the things I've been amazed at is there's always been a large population or large group fishing off the south side of the lake. Since we put that north side of the lake in, now there's almost nobody on the south side compared to what there is on the north side, so we've probably tripled the amount of people fishing there since we put that access in on the north side. So it's been a great addition. Like I said, the walking trail all the way around gives everybody a bunch of access, and I'm really confident that it would have been very hard to have had Kids Fishing Day this weekend without the walking trail, even though we don't have a whole lot of grass and stuff yet. It was still, we could still make it happen. Events, the new event this year, like I said, was the Hunger Games 450 Challenge, which was, we teamed up with several groups, but L Life was one of the big groups, the L Life Food Bank. We helped them to raise over $6,000. They handled a lot of the registrations and stuff. We basically built the course and used the grounds. The event is, again, planned for October 10, and we plan on making it bigger and better than any event that we've ever had. We actually had 125 teams last year without counting kids. I think we had about 110 single-kid entries, which, to my knowledge, is the biggest event that Parks has had as far as participation in that kind of event, and 5Ks and all those other type of events. It's the biggest one of those to have been in Lebanon. We also had the Easter Egg Extravaganza, which we partner up with Life Point Church, and you know, we always guess every year how many kids are there, and honestly, you know, it is pretty much just a guess, but we're probably guessing about 3,000 people show up. It's wall-to-wall people, and anybody that's been there, it's just a blast for all the little kids. They just have a ball. Kids Fishing Day, as we talked about, had a good event this year. We were down a little bit in numbers. The statewide did their fishing event the same weekend this year. I don't know if they canceled theirs earlier in the year because normally is in May, and they coincided at our same day, so it hurt our attendance a little bit, but it actually made it a little better, probably because there was a little more room for the ones that were there to actually be able to fish instead of trying to be shoulder-to-shoulder all day. So it's kind of safer when you've got a bunch of little kids throwing hooks around to have a little more space. Christmas in the park, again, one of our favorite events. Last year was our fourth annual. We have horse rides and just a 5K and all kinds of good events that go on, free hot dogs and food, and we're talking about having our first meeting come July to try to even grow this event, to even get bigger and bigger, and really proud of that event. That was something really neat for us that we started a couple of years ago, and again, we try to control these, try to grow these events every year. Drive-in movies, we have two scheduled for this year with Kiwanis, and hopefully, we're going to find a couple of other partners to do some more. Looking at potentially trying to figure out a way to put a screen out at Ashley Park and move the drive-ins out there. That way, we can set it up where we have a drive-in movie. An example would be every third Friday of the month from May, June, July, August, September. That way, people could plan on it. As it is now, we kind of have to work with the civic center and make sure they don't have an event, and the dates are never the same, and this way, people could get used to it, and we think that would help the attendance. Some of the other stuff we do, we host a couple disc golf tournaments. The Ice Bowl in February is a great event, always raises a lot of money for charity, and it amazes me that regardless of what the weather is, we always have 60 to 80 participants come down, and believe me, some of the days we've had it have been very challenging. The Jared Hilton will be the fourth time we've done that. They already have pre-entries to that event, and typically, it is booked full two to three weeks before the event starts. Youth baseball and softball tournaments. Last year, we had 11 tournaments, played at Boswell, Nelson, and Ashley. This year, we have about nine on the books. Unfortunately, with some of the rain and some of the challenges with rain, we're probably not going to get that number, probably only going to be about six or seven because we've lost two or three already because of the weather. Men's, we host our normal two or three or four. We got four this year on the books, a couple states, a pre-state, and the state commissioner has asked us to hold these events as a regular basis. We've done them the last two or three years in a row, so I think that speaks well of the changes we've made to the fields, to the bathrooms, and that the players want to come here to play. Otherwise, believe me, they could go to St. Louis or somewhere else with these tournaments. Park updates, you know, we've just been looking at doing some different things. We took over the park shelter reservations in 2014, which makes it really nice. A lot of online bookings. It also helps us to keep better track of what's going on in the parks and the shelter reservations, and eventually, we hope that we can get a lot of websites or email addresses where we can do some surveys to make sure these people are happy with their event and what we can do to make their events better. Winfrey Memorial Acres was a donation to us in 2014. Great piece of property, 15 acres. We're very fortunate to get it. Obviously, that's where we had the Hunger Games event at. We're still looking at trying to come up with some good ideas for this property. We have been approached by a group, and we are looking at possibly working out some kind of partnership with them to do some things out there, but it's a great piece of property, and we just want to make sure whatever we choose to do there, we do in the right way and something that will be appreciative of what the Winfrey's gave us and to use the property in a good manner for everybody involved. Operation the Boswell Aquatic Center, we did take that back over from the Y a couple of years ago. Last year was our first full year of running it. We did budget to lose money, and we lost a lot less. We lost less than we actually budgeted to, so that was a good deal, especially considering every pool that I know of last year lost money just because of the unpredictable and really extremely cool and wet summer that we had last year. It was a terrible pool year, and the It was a terrible pool year and the pools. A couple of weeks ago, I met with some of the people from Springfield and Branson and everywhere and they were all crying the blues about what their pools had done the year before and they weren't looking forward to open them on Memorial Day because Memorial Day was open early this year. They were all crying the blues about that. When we told them we weren't going to open until June sixth, they were like, boy, how did you get that lucky? And after seeing our attendance this weekend, I think we made the right decision. It's worked out really well. Fortunately, with the Nelson Education sale of that little piece of property up there, it did give us a couple million dollars to be able to work with in the parks in the future. And I think that's going to be a great addition to the parks that will allow us to bring our parks up to a standard that everybody in this community and area will be very proud of, the Lebanon City Parks. We also took over the mowings from building and grounds or facility management and kind of helps us in a couple of ways. We can make sure we're, our fields or ball fields are mowed when we need them to and we can spot mow if we get rain or something, if we know there's big events or shelter reservations or stuff like that that we need to take care of. We have the ability now to get those taken care of rather than trying to contact a different department who has to make new schedules for their people. And the other thing it does is it gives us a couple extra people on staff that when we have a rainy day on a Saturday or a Wednesday afternoon, when we've got ball games that night, I've got a couple extra bodies to be able to get ball fields or other events or stuff ready. It just has helped us a lot in weekends and things like that with bodies. And one of probably, one of the final things we're talking about is the Church of the Nazarene purchase. We're still working on that, that we're waiting on, a survey and then that'll be a complete piece of business. We did get almost seven acres. It's a little over six down there in the corner. We had leased that piece of property for a number of years, as you guys are well aware of, and probably ninety-five percent of the people of Lebanon think that was probably park property already. So it's a great fit for the park and very pleased and excited to get that piece of property to look, maybe put in some soccer fields or some other things that the park system needs. Some of the things we've also done in there, just to remind everybody, the new councilman and stuff, we put ball field fence cap up. We put walking trail lights up. We renovated the bathrooms at Nelson or at Ashley, like I said, and the parking lot at Golden. The new sign out at Ashley, flagpole, the disc golf course. And we've started trying to get our parks up to ADA standards a lot more in every aspect. We're obviously sealing the trails more than we used to, more often, and added more disc golf out at Harkey. Disc golf is becoming a big, big draw. It's amazing how many people I see talk, I went in one Saturday and was driving through and there was a couple, or Sunday, and there was a couple of guys getting out of a car and I stopped, talked to them. They were from Springfield, just stopped by, just had heard about Lebanon, wanted to stop and play golf. New skate ramps at Nelson. New diving board to go along with our pool. And that would be it. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
We've got one, John.
Yes, sir.
We were down at Harkey Sunday or Saturday. There's a little knee-high post out there without anything on top of it.
Yes, that is a digger toy that we broke and we're trying to get it fixed.
I noticed that, okay.
Yeah, it was a handicap digger toy and the bolt top of it got broken off.
Didn't know whether anybody mentioned that or not.
Yeah, we've got the parts to it.
Any other questions of Mr. Schilt? Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
You've all seen a resume from Marvin Baznet, who I propose to nominate now for a position on Veterans Memorial Board.
Second.
And this is for the reappointments to mayor from the other four members?
I can't hear you.
This is for the reappointment of the other four members?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Now, we have parade permit request relating to an event that the Daily Rucker proposed to put on downtown dealing with an anti-drug message. Sue?
Yes, the Daily Rucker is hosting an event on the twenty-sixth. They'll be shut, we'll be shutting down Commercial Street between Jefferson and Adams during the event. It's geared towards children to promote drug-free theme. There'll also be games, some food vendors. We'll also have officers there with the K-9 Division and we'll have an officer there to fingerprint children if their parents would like to have that type of service and a record for them to keep.
My only comment will be it's Commercial Street, not Main Street.
Commercial Street.
Just Main Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't notice that.
Main Street from LDR. And I don't think she wants them on Main Street.
Yeah. It is Commercial Street.
It is Commercial. My question is...
Well, if it brings more attention to how horrible it is, I'm all for it.
No, the third line there, so it'd be Main Street from the LDR office to the post office.
Right.
That one kind of threw me. My question is, and I don't have a problem with it, but, you know, people use the post office because of people, their post office boxes are in there. And I know this is like, why are we not using a lot behind the LDR where we put farmers' markets? Where it would be more safe and we wouldn't have to block off the street? Just a question.
They wanted a street fair. They wanted to...
Well, we have, you have before you.
I've got some answers for you, actually. So I did speak with Trenae at the LDR and they are requesting use of some electric for like a blow-up thing and a couple of small food vendors potentially. She did want to make sure that all the businesses were closed and I told her that'd be a probably a condition with LDR because they, they have their after-hours for everybody. So the post office will be closed and it's pretty temporary closure. You know, people obviously can access the post office boxes of the post office, but they're still able to get to it, really. They could come up Adams Street, for instance, Parkland Side. So they're not completely blocked off from that facility.
I would like to say thank you for whoever's putting this on. I think we need to do everything we can do in this community to rid this community of a drug problem. We do have one and we need to do something about it. So anything that we can bring attention to it, we need to do it.
Would you like to follow that with a motion?
I make a motion, we accept this.
Any other comments, questions? Can I have roll call?
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes. Now, we come to a public hearing for rezoning request for four eighty-three South Adams. Can I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Now, we come to a public hearing for rezoning request for four eighty-three South Adams. Can I have a motion to adjourn from public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. And I might add, there was no public opposition to that the night of the planning and zoning meeting.
And the structure itself would require Chapter thirty-four for...
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Now, we move to ordinances and there being no second ratings, we move to first and second ratings, the first of which is Council Bill forty-ninety-three, which is a, an agreement for continuation of our certificates of participation for two thousand and ten.
Motion to approve. Second.
Oh, there, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. Are you ready for me?
No.
Okay.
Did she get those?
Well, we'll do, we'll do the action later on in the...
No, we're already on Council Bill forty-ninety-three.
And have a motion in a second. I don't think it requires...
It's on the back.
No, we just made a motion down here. I had a motion in a second to come out of public hearing and this is what the roll calls, right?
Yeah. Now, we have a motion in a second for Council Bill forty-ninety-three.
Well, that's on further down. No, it's not. No, the agreement for the...
I...
We've already, oh, okay. We've already gone in. You guys... No, we're way ahead of you. Okay. Let me get former boss talks to you.
I thought we were confused. I'm like, why are we going to be non? That's why I was questioning that.
Okay, let me get that motion in second and writing. Mrs. Mather? I'm low. Make a second. So you didn't need any explanation. Are you ready for roll call?
We are.
We're waiting.
Okay. Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Now, we move to ordinances and there being no second ratings, we move to first and second ratings, the first of which is Council Bill forty-ninety-three, which is a, an agreement for continuation of our certificates of deposit series two thousand and ten.
Motion to approve. Second.
Oh, there, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. Are you ready for me?
No.
Okay.
Did she get those?
Well, we'll do, we'll do the action later on in the...
No, we're already on Council Bill forty-ninety-three.
And have a motion in a second. I don't think it requires...
It's on the back.
No, we just made a motion down here. I had a motion in a second to come out of public hearing and this is what the roll calls, right?
Yeah. Now, we have a motion in a second for Council Bill forty-ninety-three.
Well, that's on further down. No, it's not. No, the agreement for the... You already did it. Oh, okay. We've already gone in. You guys... No, we're way ahead of you. Okay. I was going to get former boss talks to you.
I thought we were confused. I'm like, why are we going to be non? That's why I was questioning that.
Okay, let me get that motion in second and writing. Mrs. Mather? I'm low. Make a second. So you didn't need any explanation. Are you ready for roll call?
We are.
We're waiting.
Okay. Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes. White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes. Move on, second. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Council Bill 4096 is approved and has become ordinance 5347. Council Bill 4097 deals with the purchase of a slipform curb machine. And I understand this was the subject of significant discussion at the budget assessment last Thursday night. Anybody have any questions that weren't answered at that time?
I have a question. Will you have to go to special training to learn how to operate this, and how many people are going to be operators?
Actually, there's a guy, our rep is out of Little Rock. He plans to come up here and spend three days and actually pour, pour with us and train as many as we want. He, he's a, seems to be a pretty hands-on kind of guy. Yeah, pretty guy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes. Move on, second. Second, second.
Council Bill 4097 has been passed and is now ordinance 5348. That concludes first and second readings, and we move to the first reading, and this relates to the rezoning request that you heard the public hearing on. Could I have a motion?
Most approved.
Second.
Mr. Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes. Move on, second. Second, second.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes. Move on, second.
Second, second. Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Council Bill 4096 is approved and has become ordinance 5347. Council Bill 4097 deals with the purchase of a slipform curb machine. And I understand this was the subject of significant discussion at the budget assessment last Thursday night. Anybody have any questions that weren't answered at that time?
I have a question. Will you have to go to special training to learn how to operate this, and how many people are going to be operators?
Actually, there's a guy, our rep is out of Little Rock. He plans to come up here and spend three days and actually pour, pour with us and train as many as we want. He, he's a, seems to be a pretty hands-on kind of guy. Yeah, pretty guy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes. Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?